We will call the city council meeting to order, and we'd like to welcome the Reverend Amanda Dosher from St. James Episcopal Church to do the opening prayer. Afterwards, please stand for, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, Heavenly Father, we thank you for the abundance of gifts that you have bestowed upon the people of this community, for the natural beauty of this land, and the generous spirit of its people. We pray today for your wisdom and courage upon our mayor and city council to make fair and meaningful and timely decisions for our city. Give them compassion to understand the needs of all people who call Fairhope home. Give them a sense of your justice, so that they may do what is good and right in your eyes. Give them a sense of peace and trust as they work together for the common good. We also pray for our first responders and all those who put their lives in danger so that we might live in safety and peace. We pray for all those who are caring for the sick and suffering in our community, the doctors, nurses, caregivers, and therapists. And we ask you to comfort those who suffer and grieve from any sickness or adversity. May your love and blessings rest upon us all, so that we may continue to become the people you call us to be. All this we pray through your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance, do the flag of the United States of America into a hope which sustains one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend tonight's agenda to, well, I guess maybe after approving the minutes, if we could move items 14 through 17 to the beginning of tonight, so those people can have the rest of their day back.
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of taking the agenda out of order to consider items 14 through 17 prior to number five? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. First on the agenda is we will approve the minutes of the February 27th regular city council meeting and work session.
Make a motion, will you approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Counsel, any changes, additions or changes to the minutes from that meeting? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number two is reported by the mayor.
So I just wanted to start off by thanking the Recreation Department and all the other city departments for really pulling together this past week to get the new baseball fields open. It was a great day on Saturday. We dedicated the youth fields for Van Salts and the high school field for Mike Villenjim, and it was just, it was just really a nice day at the park. I mean, all the families were out there really excited, but it was nice to be able to recognize two of those longtime volunteers who've been so instrumental in building the recreation programs here in Fairhope. It just kind of felt like being part of old Fairhope again. So a lot of old time people coming back, a lot of alumni coming back for Coach Villenjim's naming of the high school field, so it was just really a good day. Also, we had softball opening day the weekend prior to that, so we had a lot of girls out there and volunteers and parents. And then this weekend, we'll have spring soccer opening up at Manly, and we also have the Arts and Crafts Festival and Spring Fever Chase. So staff has been really busy getting ready for these spring events and just always things that we look forward to. So excited for the weekend, hoping the weather holds out. Everybody's fingers are crossed. And again, want to thank those people who make these events possible for, not only for our residents, but for the people who visit Fairhope. And now I'd like to recognize somebody who's also a longtime volunteer in the city of Fairhope. Vince, would you like to come up? I was surprised this weekend when somebody asked, actually asked Vince who he was. He was standing behind me, and they said, "Who are you?" And I was like, "How can somebody not know who Vince Booth is?" I was like, "That just doesn't seem possible." But tonight, we're recognizing Vince for his service to the Airport Authority. Vince's term expires the end of March, and so we're here tonight to present a plaque to him that says, "For eight years of dedicated service and for volunteering your time and talents with the city of, the city of Fairhope Airport Authority. Sherry Sullivan, Mayor, and the Fairhope City Council, March 2023." So Vince, thank you for your time and all the efforts and all your volunteerism to the city, not only for the Airport Authority, but for everything else you do. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
(applause). Well, I'll say, Sherry, now the first committee we ever served on was the softball when we went to fast pitch.
That's right.
They put me on the rules committee. I don't know what she did. I had to get all the complaints. (laughter).
A long time ago. That's what I told them this weekend. So I think Vince was there, and John Baker was there this weekend, and I think the first time that all three of us were together at a park opening was Founders', and that was probably, what, close to 30 years ago? Close to 30 years ago. So it's been a long time, and like I said, Vince has been a longtime supporter of the city, and him and his family, all of his family has been, so just really appreciate all they do. There's so many things that they've touched that people aren't even aware of. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And just for the record, I was not the person who asked who Vince was. I was aware.[363.03][363.03](laughter). All right. Item number three is public participation for agenda items. So if you have anything to say on items six through 17, now is your opportunity. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kermit Magus. I live at 400 Jasmine Street, and my problem is the creator, the crater that has developed in front of my house. The truck comes around from the city and picks up leaves and debris, a big scooper. And you can't be perfect. You're going to take dirt every once in a while. Well, it's so deep now, it's 18 inches deep, seven feet, seven feet by 18 inches deep by 12 feet wide. And if a car goes in there, they're not going to get out. They're going to have to be towed out. And someone's going to get sued, and I don't want it to be me, because it's not on my property. It's on city property. And that hole has been there for over 30 years, but it never got deep, because the city used to come around and level it out with dirt, and we never had a problem. Now, I went down to the city dump, the maintenance people, and I went down in December, January, and February, and I gave my name, my address, my telephone number, and the problem. I got nothing. So I started three times from the bottom to go up, and one time, I'm going to start from the top and go down. And it's something I'm doing for the city, because it's not going to affect me, but the city could get sued.
Sure.
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I can't hear.
We'll take care of it tomorrow.
Thank you. Anybody else? Items six through 17.
Good evening. My name is Dionne Heisel. I'm the Executive Director of Ballin County Trailblazers. I'm happy to be before you tonight, and I appreciate you taking up our request, item number 15, approval for the Talk the Trail event. This will be the third year that the Trailblazers have hosted it. Proceeds go to advocacy for the trails.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, I will close public participation and go to council comments. Councilman Burrell.
Yeah, I just, this is one of my favorite weeks of the year, the Fairhope Parks and Crafts Festival that's going on. And actually, I want to remind everybody that it looks, it is one big happy time, but there's really two festivals going on. There's one put on by the Arts and Crafts Committee, there's another one that's put on by the Eastern Shore Art Center. And why do I, why do I bring that up? It's because I was asked by the Art Center if the city could have the shuttle bus come down there and get some of the people that, you know, when they get to the end of the line, so to speak, they have a hard time getting back. Well, that, I found out from the mayor that that shuttle bus is contracted with the, with the other group, and I think they may have to lease that. So what I would like to ask is that if we can take our downtown parking shuttle and maybe use it to go down Church Street, and we can drive them around to, to this end of town and just make sure that we don't have, you know, people elderly or young, if they're disabled, or disabled people that might need a lift back to the, kind of the center of town, if you will.
It's already done?
Yeah. When you asked me, people said, "I don't have that."
Okay, fantastic. I didn't know, I didn't hear from you, but I, so I was going to bring it up in here so that we could debate it if we needed to. Excellent. Thank you. And I guess, and then lastly, Vince, I knew you way before the Airport Authority, you're doing everything. It seemed like any, anytime, anything needed to be done at the ball fields, at the school, I guess probably as it related to sports, because that's what I was, I was following, is that you always lent a hand and lent your time and your talents and your money to all those endeavors. So thank you for all your volunteerism. Like I said, you volunteered your time, you volunteered your family, you volunteered your money and your talent, so thank you.
Councilor Gagnes?
I think Councilman Burrell pretty much covered what I was going to say.
Sorry.
It's all right. Sometimes it pays to be first.
I went last for nine years.
Exactly. So you get it. But I just want to thank Vince for his service and also remind everyone to come out to Arts and Crafts. Should be a great weekend.
Yeah, I've known Vince over 50 years, and he's always been helpful. Anytime you needed a boy, he was always there for you. Get a big out of boy. And this is, Arts and Crafts is probably my favorite time in Fairhope. It's a fine time of the year, and I hope everybody comes out and enjoys the festivities and be careful out there. That's it.
All right. First thing I want to, I want to just announce something that, that I was looking at here, that Fairhope is identified as ranking number two. I guess this is in the country for, as far as, I guess, gold fortified homes at 3,057 behind only Mobile, which is obviously a significant thing considering the amount of storms we've had in the last couple of years and the damage we had as a result of Sally. Hopefully, that fortified designation is not needed again anytime soon, but in the event that it is, we know that we've got a lot taken care of around here. Second, I'm going to lie and say that Arts and Crafts is my favorite time of the year also, and I say it's a lie, because I say that about tree lighting, I say that about the Christmas parade, I say that about, just about everything we do around here. That's because I just like it all so much. But my real favorite thing around here is opening day of baseball, which y'all got to hear from Pat White earlier. We got to, we got to hear from Mayor Sullivan. We got to have these two field designations for longtime volunteers, which was incredibly worthwhile. And then to have such a gorgeous day on Saturday with, with little kids playing baseball on every field at Valana, including the new four fields. And it was just really an awesome day, an awesome time to be up there. And again, to reiterate what Pat said, to have every department come together to complete it in time so that we could take advantage and use those and have these kids enjoy it. And I'm telling you, the kids were excited, the parents were excited, the coaches were excited. It was really something to watch. And it's just nice to see that kind of teamwork come together to make something happy for, happen for the citizens to get to enjoy. And then lastly, again, I will, you know, Mr. Booth, thank you for all of your contributions to the community. Just because you're off the Airport Authority, I hope that doesn't mean we're done seeing your contributions to the community. We appreciate any continued efforts on your behalf. But thank you again for all that you've done before, and I'm sure all you will do in the future. All right. Moving ahead, going to item number 14, we have two appointments to the Airport Authority. Appointment number one is Don Ward and a reappointment of Mr. William Bruce. Jack?
Yeah, I mean, they were unanimously voted on, recommendation to the council to approve. Mayor made the nomination, and so just, you know, Mr. Bruce has been on the authority for a number of years now, and he's a great contributor, and look forward to working with Mr. Ward, so.
Okay. Counsel, I will entertain a motion on item number 14.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 15 is a request from Molly Spain, President of the Ballin County Trailblazers, requests permission to use the sidewalks and grassy area of Utopia Park for a Ballin County Trailblazer event, Third Annual Chalk the Trail, on Saturday, April 22nd, 2023, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m., with an alternate rain date of Sunday, April 23rd, 2023, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. If Utopia Park is not available, a secondary request for the event to be held on the same time and date at the Arn Street Pier location. The event raises awareness as well as funds for the Ballin County Trailblazers.
I got a quick question.
Please.
I'm going to just embarrass myself, but is Utopia Park known by some other name?
Well, it is actually, it's somewhere in, coming out, Moon Street, in that Bay Area.
Okay. It's the stretch on the bayfront there? Some people call it Bayfront Park, maybe? Okay. I was not exactly sure where that was. Did you know where it was?
You mean?
Exactly?
Yeah, no, I'm kind of embarrassed, too.
(laughter).
Okay. Yes, of course I knew that, obviously. No, but thank you for clearing that up, Councilman Burrell.
Yeah. I didn't have a problem with it, but I wasn't exactly sure. I thought maybe when I was out, I missed the last meeting. Y'all dedicated a park without me. I wasn't sure.
It was Utopia or Jack Burrell Park. We went with Utopia, but.
Yeah. I don't blame you.
Narrow vote. All right, counsel, I will entertain a motion for item number 15.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 16 is a request from Bradis Sharp with the Eastern Shore Repertory Theater, Inc. requests approval to use Henry George Park from April 26, 2023, to May 8, 2023, for the 10th Annual Theater on the Bluff for three public performances.
I see Aaron in the audience, and I will say, this is one of my favorite things that we do in Fairhope, and I can't believe that you're on to year number 10. I mean, that has gone by in a hurry. So that, this is a great event. If anyone wants to come out and watch, watch musical theater on the bluff with the sunset as the background and the bay as a background, it's a pretty incredible, pretty incredible situation. And I know she's going to have a great, great performance, and I'm already looking forward to being there.
Yeah. I wanted to say that I believe I read an article here in the last few weeks about the group, I don't know where, did you go to New York and perform? And they did Newsies, and the original writer or director or producer, or maybe all of those, was actually came to the show, is that right?
Yes.
And was pretty impressed with the E S R T, is what I understand. That like made national headlines.
Yes. We perform for the director, and we perform for several of the original cast members that is a performance, so.
So that's what comes out, and that's pretty impressive.
Would it be disingenuous if I said this is one of my favorite things as well?
Yes.[1089.32][1089.32](laughter).
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Nice thing about living in Fairhope, man, so many things are just your favorite things.
I mean, you know.
I'm going to make a motion to grant the request.
A second.
All right, counsel, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 17 is a request from Chad Clark, event coordinator of the Fairhope Rotary Club Foundation, requests approval of the Fairhope Rotary Club Steak Cookoff on May 12, 2023, for street closures on Bancroft between Fairhope Avenue and Morphe Avenue and Johnson Avenue between Section Street and Bancroft Street. Event from 12:00 p.m. to midnight, and approval to allow alcohol on city streets contingent upon ABC license and approval.
Well, I know this is one of mine and Councilman Boone's favorite events, because we like to eat, so. I'm sure it's your favorite as well.
It's one of my favorites as well, yes.[1149.83][1149.83](laughter).
In fact, I like it so much, I want to make a motion to grant the request.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Back to page one, we have item number five, which is a public hearing. It's an ordinance to request to establish initial zoning of FST and Encounter Development LLC's property to B2 General Business District concurrent with conditional annexation into the city of Fairhope. The property is approximately 1.16 acres and is located at the northeast corner of State Highway 181 and State Highway 101.
Thank you, Council President. I did kind of preface this by saying this is a quick one. I'm going to jump, because we've had a lot of conversations. The area in red came in as a conditional annexation about two months ago. This was the remaining out parcel that they didn't have complete ownership of at the same, at that time. They now do, and this, basically, the, the request for this is to bring that in as the same B2 property. There's really not a whole lot more to say about this one, so there is a little bit, I'll show you the, on the right, you do see the blue line. When Aldit acquired Rightofway, this one was not cleared up, so we will be annexing the rectangle showed in blue and let them handle the Rightofway acquisitions through Aldit. So the legal description, that's kind of when you look at the parcel map, it shows this, this geometry. I'm going to just skip right on, same conversation we had. Rinse and repeat, the recommendation from both the planning commission and staff is to be approved with no outstanding conditions. We do have this month, for anyone interested, a preliminary plat for this property and kind of see how it lays out.
Okay. Hunter, any, well, I guess before I ask my questions, will someone introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Okay. Ordinance has been introduced, and I'll open up the public hearing at this point. No? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Hunter, my question would be, is there any reason that this needs to be considered for immediate consideration, or could it lay over two weeks?
It can lay over. We have, we've already accepted the application, so if, if it beats, you know, we can have a condition on the preliminary plat. There's no, I don't think it, it prolongs things. I would, instead of breaking tradition, I would say, let's let it held over, and we can see it next, next week.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Hunter at this point? All right. Thank you, Hunter.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on. Item number six is a resolution that the city of Fairhope accepts the U.S. Department of Treasury notice of award approving Amendment Number One for Grant Restore Act Sewer Upgrade Phase One, increasing total grant amount to $13,500,000, and the council authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to sign the amended grant agreement on behalf of the city. And for those of you who did not see the work session, that is an increase to the city of Fairhope of about $3.2 million.
Move to accept the notice of the award.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Kind of a no-brainer.
Absolutely. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number seven is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves a selection for professional engineering services for Fairwater System Planning Project Phase One, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute a contract with Krebs Engineering with a not-to-exceed amount of $32,000.
Move to approve the selection.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I thought it was, I just thought it was a pretty good price for this, and that's good company, and I know that you've been happy with them, right? I mean, they, they seem to know, learning, learning more and more about our system and every day. It just was kind of a relief to see what I thought was a pretty, a pretty good price.
Well, and just continuing to figure out more ways to optimize our water situation with, with some of the things we've had, that we've discussed in the past and working towards in the future.
And I hope that spike in water uses was, you know, in early spring, had a little bit of a dry spell, it got about 80 degrees, and everybody's flowers started blooming, and people wanted to keep their yards alive, and, you know, and a lot of people were starting to put fertilizer down and things. I'm hoping that's, that's all that was, and not a sign of things to come for the summer.
All right, counsel, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number eight is a resolution to award to John M. Warren, Inc. for Crowdcade Barricades or equivalent with a total bid proposal not to exceed $49,892.
Move to award the bid. It's pass-through cost.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. 593 barricades, I think, is what that, what that is. Okay, awesome. I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number nine is a resolution to award for asbestos abatement, Fairhope K-1 Center to Hernandez Demolition and Remediation LLC, with a total bid proposal not to exceed $64,028.40.
Move to award the bid.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I was going to say real quickly, that was, you know, this is one where the spread in the bids was a little bit more so than what we've seen, and this was, it kind of, kind of beat everybody hands down. So I'm glad that they were qualified, and I know we got that 20% contingency. I hope that our engineers didn't miscalculate by, by 20%, so still a really good, another good number tonight.
Sure. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 10 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves a selection by Mayor Sherry Sullivan for utility cost of service study, and hereby authorizes the mayor to execute a contract with Jackson Thornton, Certified Public Accountants and Consultants, with a not-to-exceed amount of $77,200.
Make a motion, will you approve?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. And this is also, this, out of this 77,200, we have a $25,000 grant, correct?
Yes, that's coming from, I mean, from Electric.
What, what's coming from Electric?
We get reimbursed from the AL, from ALD.
A M E A. Okay, so.
A paper a third of.
Yeah.
Well, and that, that's money that would come back to us anyways.
So it's not.
We're about 10% of that, so.
All right.
Sort of.
I was looking for some, you know, sunshine in there somewhere. All right. Do I have a motion and a second on that? Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 11 is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of a 36-month lease for a new Hewlett-Packard plotter for the public utilities building, and lease is on the NASPO cooperative contract and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost for the lease is $11,670.84.
Make a motion, will you approve the procurement?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second, and I think we discussed, it's about $324 a month over budget. Okay? Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.[1656.13]
All right, any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number twelve is a resolution that the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of a Toro Groundmaster thirty-two-hundred four-wheel-drive mower or equivalent for the Public Works Horticulture Department. And the type of equipment needed is on the Omni-a-National contract and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The total amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand, eight eighty-five and sixty-eight cents.
Make a motion, will you approve the purchase? Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Richard, what did you say about this one? You said it won't be, it won't make it here this budget year?
No, no. This.
The two that are currently occupied in the vote, the P O's issued for, are not going to be delivered. Those are John Deere, so we need mowers, so Toro, Jerry Fay, we got another one in. So the number y'all authorized to purchase, me myself with the first one. This will be the two mowers for this year, and we're keeping the P O in place, hoping for next year to get John Deere.
So we, we budgeted for two mowers, and after this one, we will now have purchased, actually purchased two, and then we put two more in the pipeline for future.
That's correct.
Okay. So even though it says over budget, it's technically, technically budgeted for this year?
Yes.
Sort of.
Sort of. All right.
It's my favorite thing to do.
Counsel, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number thirteen is a resolution that the, that certain items are declared surplus, and the mayor and city treasurer are hereby authorized and directed to dispose of personal property owned by the city of Fairhope by one of the four methods listed on the resolution. Counsel, when you look in your packet, item number thirteen, there's a list of a variety of things that we will be selling off.
Make a motion, will you approve?
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
It, it, yeah, I'm, I'm going to vote in favor, but we do, and section two says, A, it says the property shall be sold to the highest bidder, provided the city council should have the authority to reject the bids when it's an opinion that doesn't deem the bid to be adequate consideration. And, you know, technically, we don't really get that opportunity to, to do that. I mean, you just, it's sold, and, I mean, we don't get a list and say, these are the bids. So maybe that ought to be struck out, or say, in somebody else's opinion.
Do we set a reserve on these bids? Is that how it's done?
On, on the bigger ticket items, for example, we've got the category to give us what the fair market value is, and so we set a reserve so that we make sure that we will get the receipts to go on what category we're offering.
I got you, okay. Okay. But yeah, I think, I think Jack's right that, that maybe for future reference, if that's what the ordinance says as far as what, how this is supposed to go, since we don't actually reject bids for council, we might just change that wording for the next.
Yeah, let's work on it for the next one, maybe. We all look at that wording.
Or just, yeah, for, for, I mean, the resolutions of this, if we're disposing of personal property to the city just to take out that we're, that the council's going to reject bids, since that's not something we do. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, last, we'll skip back down to number eighteen, which is public participation for non-agenda items. If you have something, please come say your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Jesse Patterson, one zero six three zero, County Road One. I got a couple of things tonight. Number one, I had a question. Is there anything in the works or in the plan to make Fairhope schools, city schools, like Orange Beach and Gulfport has been doing? That's not, okay.
Not, not, not that's orchestrated by council, for sure.
Okay. The, the other, the main thing I come to you tonight is, there's a plan, there's a three-to-five-year plan for Fairup West Elementary. And in this plan, along Section Street, where the drainage goes all the way down into the gully, there is a, oh, just let me see this. Sure. The one page shows you where it is. The second page will show you an example of what it is. So we're looking at maybe something like a Dry Creek bed or some kind of swole to go down a long section that comes down into a, to a boardwalk and a little area down in the gully, and also a little walking trail that would incorporate, we could get the students down there to test the water quality, things like that. So I was just wanted to start the process, get some council input, how, to go about getting this built.
Jesse, is who's funding that? Board of Education, did they, did they pay for those designs?
Well, that's, step one is to see, because this is, this part in particular is, I'm sure it's in the Rightofway, it's in the city gully, it's not even on the Board of Education site. So we're just trying to hope to incorporate all this. The buildings, we are going to go to the county for the funding for the actual buildings that you see. And then the rest that you see are provided by the Booster Thons and the fundraisers and.
Mayor Sullivan, do you have any information to provide on this?
Julie Pierce, the principal, and also the science teacher, the STEAM teacher, has reached out and told me they were coming up with a plan, and they wanted to talk to me about it. They haven't brought me the plan yet, so I told them when they did. There was possibly the opportunity to partner with the city if it's something we thought we could do and maybe apply for a NDECA grant, or look at other ways of funding. If they wanted to look at that, when they came to bring me the plan, but they haven't not brought me that plan as of yet. Thank you.
So if I may, Jesse, just, I mean, I only glanced at that for about twenty seconds there, but, but what I saw, just real quick, I mean, that didn't, like, it give me any heartache. And, you know, that little trail that would go down to that area that floods, I mean, you got to understand, sometimes that's going to be underwater, so they need to make sure that they design that. But the other thing I was going to mention was that it came up in the, in the campaign season, two or three elections ago, and it had to do with, you know, the drainage that we have right here along Section Street. And, and it's effective, and, you know, it's concrete, but it just had to do with, people wanted ideas to make that more attractive. And I think maybe that's even something that you're alluding to. And I'd be all for making, you know, whether you put in little steeling ponds. Do you remember Ms. Fiddler talked about that some, Mayor? Some, some, you know, maybe have a little waterfall here or there, and some water, you know, some, some aquaculture in some steeling ponds, and just make it art.
We've also talked about a trail system through the gully. I think that's been talked about with F E A B, so I think that would be a good group to work on this project. I think they would love to, so.
There was also a, an Eagle Scout project many years that went behind the Art Center down to the gully. And it's been maybe thirty years ago, if you read the history there. There used to be an entrance to the trail, and the, the trailhead may still be there. But there was an Eagle Scout project done to clear a trail down to that gully. So it's been done, and I thought that was a pretty cool, pretty cool idea.
That's great, it's good news. If you see on that plan next to the Nick Center, there is a walking trail to utilize that space that goes through the gully. And then I talked to Mr. Johnson about, maybe he had some ideas about some rock formations to put in there to bridge some of those gaps, like you were talking about, with different water levels and whatnot.
Exactly.
So he had some good ideas and maybe even some funding ideas to go along with that. And Mayor, this is the plan that they, I'm on the patron committee for the school, and this was just brought from Chris at the last meeting, which was this week, last week. So I just wanted to, I offered to be the one to say, take it on and say, can we get this, can we do this project, because it's very worthwhile. Let's see, the, oh, so the other thing was White Avenue. Tomorrow, there's a, at six-thirty, a single tax meeting in Gettens Hall, six-thirty. And White Avenue is on the agenda, and I would love to have all of you there. I just personally publicly invite you all to.
Six-thirty?
Yes, sir.
That's for White Avenue Park?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Jesse, just back.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody else for public participation? All right, guys, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Meeting is adjourned.